My mic is on. Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, December 13th, 2023. Meeting, the regular meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call, please? Commissioner Rotman?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Present.
Can we have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, the agenda was posted and available for public access at City Hall by nine o'clock PM on Thursday, December 7th, as well as our website, and it was posted in accordance with city and state requirements. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is a time for public comments. It's been set aside for members of the public to discuss consent calendar and other agenda items and items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. The commission is prohibited from taking action on items that haven't been agendized. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. Testimony, there is, there are no public hearings tonight, so members of the public who would like to comment on items 1A, 4A, and 4B will make their comments in public comment. Public comment is now opened. Is there, are there members, people who wish to speak? If you'd come forward?
We have Wayne Gottlieb for item 4B, or sorry, I'm sorry, 4A. Yes, yep, right there.
Okay. My name is Wayne Gottlieb. I'm a resident of Palm, I'm a resident of Palm Springs for the last 40 years. I have a business here in Palm Springs, and I'm looking to hopefully have your approval for my cannabis shop. Okay, thank you.
The next speaker is Tarif Talalov for item 4B.
Hi, Tarif Talalov, owner of the Village, just here to hopefully put in a good word for our establishment. We've been there 28 years, and we had an LUP amendment, I believe, a couple of years ago, at which time a six-month review was placed for that period. COVID is gone. We've done extremely well. We're here to hopefully get that removed, and no more six months reviews moving forward. Thank you.
We have additional speakers associated with item 4B. Mr. Talalov, I'm not sure if you want David Mariner to speak now, or wait for questions from the commission? With that, we have no additional speakers signed up to speak, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The next item, the public hearing is closed. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar, and it is the approval of the minutes of November 8th, 2023.
Madam Chair, may I make a correction to those before you all vote on it? And would ask that perhaps someone include it in the motion. There is, there is an error. It lists Commissioner Murphy as absent. That should be an excused absence. We apologize for that, Commissioner Murphy.
Is there a motion on this, or are there any corrections?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
With the corrections, Jeff.
With the correction.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving right along to item 4A. This is, oh, I'm reading the wrong document. A request by Wayne Gottlieb owner in conjunction with Off the Charts Cannabis Dispensary for a major development permit application to construct a 628-square-foot addition to an existing commercial building for a new cannabis dispensary and lounge located at 1534 North Palm Canyon Drive. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you had read into the record, this is a proposal for a 628-square-foot addition onto an existing building for a proposed tenant for Off the Charts Cannabis Dispensary and Lounge. The zoning for the property is C1, and a cannabis dispensary and lounge is a permitted use by right. So the reason why this is here before the planning commission tonight is the addition of the 628-square-foot onto the rear of the property is greater than 25% of the overall square footage of the building itself. So that is one of the reasons why it is here before the planning commission. You normally would not see this as a dispensary in the C1 zone, but because of the addition to the back of the building, that's why it's here before you today. And this allows the city to ask for some things from the property owner, and I'm going to go over those in just a minute. So the administrative actions that have already occurred includes a cannabis license that's issued by the city. They have completed that process. Also, they had an odor control plan that was also approved by the city, and our odor consultant is here in the audience today if there's any questions about odor control. One of the asks from the city is that street dedication be given to the city. In just a second, I'll show you an exhibit that shows the placement of the building. It is located within the city right-of-way, so if Palm Canyon Drive ever were to be widened, street dedication would be required. The current buildings were built in the 1940s, and the buildings were placed farther forward than other buildings that are along Palm Canyon. One of the outcomes of adding the dispensary is that there's a shared parking with the building adjacent to it. This is Mr. Gottlieb's tax office, so they will need to do what's called a lot tie agreement that ties the two buildings together, meaning that one building could not be sold separately without the other one having to relinquish the parking or place it in a, have a use that would not you have as much parking required as the dispensary and lounge. The Architecture Review Committee will look at the building materials, the elevations, the finishes, and the landscape plan at a future date. But this before you tonight is the development permit, and then it will go forward to the Architecture Review Committee. In looking at the aerial photograph, the two buildings that are in question are where the dispensary will be located, this building here, and then Mr. Gottlieb's tax office is the northern building. The red lines that you see are the property lines, the parcel lines, and you'll notice that to the south, there is a condominium complex that was built in the 1980s, and this, let me point to it, this red line you'll see is set farther back from the street. The city received dedication for the street widening at that time, and you'll see currently, right now, the lot lines go through the front of the building. This will require that the applicant do what's called a, sir, are you here for planning commission? Okay.
Thanks, Keith.
This will require the dedication of additional street right-of-way should the city ever determine that the road needs to be widened. And this is done through our engineering department. There are several conditions of approval that we'll look at in just a minute that will achieve that. So they will need to do an encroachment permit to allow, should this ever be needed in the future. Let me get through that. As you can see in this photograph, this is the front elevation showing the two, two buildings itself. The current building was a daycare center in the most recent tenant, and you'll notice that these buildings, this one in question is right at the street. The tax office is placed farther back with a planter in the front. And here's a photograph showing how the building is right at the street, which is in the city right-of-way. There's a site plan that is, was in your packet. This shows, I'm sorry, if this was Zoom, I could zoom into this, but this shows the two buildings. The lot lines, that will be a new lot line, is the dashed black line at the bottom, and you'll see it goes through the center of the building. So if the city ever needs to widen, the building would have to be moved. The existing building is here, and then the addition, the 628-square-foot is in the rear. There is a south driveway, which is the ingress here, and it circulates around the tax office, and you exit to the north driveway. This, the lot tie, which will allow the parking to be reconfigured and add a median here for angled parking, and then various street trees to provide shading of the parking lot itself. On the right side is the floor plan, which shows the existing building, which will have the dispensary, and then the entryway, the lounge, offices, and storage. There are building elevations showing the addition. It will be consistent with the design of the building itself. It'll have a barretto roof, white stucco windows, so it will look like it is part of the original building itself. A roof plan showing how that will connect to the existing building. The existing building is the lighter brown, and the darker brown is the new proposed addition. The applicant has also provided some 3D imaging as to what it will look like once the addition is added and their parking lot is reconfigured. This is the driveway that comes off of Palm Canyon Drive. It's around 12 feet wide, and if pedestrians are going from Palm Canyon to the entrance to the dispensary, they'll have to walk this short distance because the entrance is off to the parking lot side. And just some photographs of existing conditions. Right now, there's a pull-through parking area, and by adding an island median, it will help direct traffic better. Once again, this is the location of where the addition would be located with the entrance in the rear here. Some photographs of the parking lot. This is an opportunity to upgrade the parking lot, to add street tree, I'm sorry, shade trees, and, as I mentioned, the median to direct traffic. So staff recommends approval. There are conditions in, the conditions of approval, planning number two, which is, requires a lot tie agreement, planning number three, the street dedication, and then engineering number 32, also about the street dedication. So, Madam Chair, that concludes my report, and the applicant, as he mentioned, is here along with his architect.
Thank you. Are there, let's start with questions of staff. Mr. Miller?
Yeah. Not sure if the staff will answer this, or if the applicant will. I was out at the site today, and I noted two items that I just wanted to ask. In the far northeast corner of the parking lot, and in fact, it showed up in your photo, is it existing storage container? I just wanted to make sure that was going to be removed, because that is not shown in the site plan. And then the other question is related to the front window on the left side of the building that is at the street level. It's currently either stuck out or plywood, plywooded over, and I want to make sure that's going to be opened up as a window again.
Your first question, I'll have to ask the applicant. I did notice that shipping container is there. And then here in this elevation, it shows the window replaced back, so it's not...
Before we get to that, I want to see if there are other questions. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, I had a question about the parking. It's, if I'm reading the map correctly, it looks like there's one handicap parking spot towards the back, which would be the east end of the lot. And I just, if that is the case, I wondered why it was located there and not space 11 or 15 without, it seems like it would just be more convenient and safer to have handicap access closer to the buildings.
Right, so...
Without necessarily losing one of the parking spots.
Yes.
That's one question. The second one is, the, the driveway is pretty narrow, and I'm wondering if it's, if there's enough space, or how you would designate a pedestrian path along the side of the building to the entrance, because you're really, it looks like you're sharing the driveway with the sidewalk, which is access to the building.
Right, so the ADA answer, or question, ADA is reviewed by our building department when they come in for permits, and they have a direct line of path as to path of travel. I would have to review this with them. I have not talked to them about this specific location. It does seem very far away from the entrance to the, and it would make more sense if it was at another location closer to the door, but that is something that we can look at for sure. And as far as the driveway, I think we had the picture of the driveway. It's, as you mentioned, it's not very wide. It's about 12 feet. We've seen in the past where we have marked lines on the driveway to provide for walkway. We've seen in the past where we have marked lines on the driveway to provide for walkway. I don't know if something like a barrier or a bollards is necessary, somebody may run into those, but marking the driveway could be an option. You'll notice that on the other, on the tax office side, there's a curb, and that's probably about three feet wide. That may be similar to mark that on the driveway.
In reviewing this, this is obviously an existing condition, and so it's, I think you're right to raise the concern. I think if we were looking at this as new development, we would certainly look at separating those conflicts a lot more than we're able to in a situation like this, where we have sort of existing historic structures, an existing, you know, situation here that's hard to change, but I think when the applicant comes up, we can see if he's willing to do anything to address those conflicts.
Commissioner Rotman has questions, and then I do.
Yeah. So on the, not to belabor this because we can get more answers, but on the site plan, it shows that there's, if I'm reading correctly, there's a 14-foot wide driveway and then a four-foot wide sidewalk adjacent to the building. And I don't know if the little gravel strip that's on the south side of the tax office, if that's to remain or not. But do we, well, my question is one, do we need 14 feet for a drive aisle, or can that be reduced to, say, 12 feet? And does that benefit the overall site plan in terms of access and maybe even landscaping?
Right. I'd have to have the architect just, my understanding was that there wasn't going to be a sidewalk. He's shaking his head, so...
Okay. All right, so we can get that answered. And then just to go back to the ADA question, typically, you want to locate it so that you don't have to walk behind other parked cars? So it would make a lot more sense if it's feasible to move that space closer to the building. And then I just have a, in the engineering conditions, I think seven and eight, it refers to a drive aisle at 24 feet and curbs and gutters, and so I'm not sure if that needs to be revised.
I'll look into that.
Thank you.
And my questions went to the same thing, since the site plan, we did get, did show a walkway. And whether or not that gravel is going to stay or that can, that can go, actually, the whole of the parking lot's kind of rough, and is it planned that it's going to be slurry-sealed or cleaned up in this? And the front of the building also looks a bit rough, so if we send this along to Architecture Review, that's something I'd want to send along, is not just the two windows, but to make sure that it's an attractive frontage. And are we able, since this is a tied lot, are we able to require that for both buildings?
The lot is tied for the purposes of the shared parking. However, the entitlement application relates to the lot just for the dispensary, so I don't think that we can...
So the gravel, the gravel next to the, the, next to the tax office is not in our purview? But we are seeing some things in the other...
I would say, and so I thought that that question may have been related to improvements to the front of the building. I think as it relates to access, since we are, you know, increasing the square footage of the building and therefore the parking need, and that is related to the lot tie, I think let's have the conversation with the applicant in terms of what they're proposing. And my recommendation would be, you know, since we need to clean up some of the engineering conditions, and then also confer with them in terms of what their requirements for the drive aisle width are, perhaps a condition that allows staff to work with the engineering department based on what they're agreeable to and what their plan is, to look at what we can do to separate vehicular and pedestrian traffic.
And, and then the trees, I'd really like to see substantial trees, so 36-inch box, if we can do that, so that they come in with size and they actually shade. But I think now we've had questions if the applicant and his architect would like to come up.
At the time, and I'll address them, please.
So I think, let's start with the first question, which is the, the storage container that's shown in the photos on the rear of the property?
That will be removed, 100%.
And then a second question would be the location of the ADA parking. I'm not sure if you had any specific reason for that, but that would be, from our perspective, addressed through the building process, but...
Is that where it says handicap parking? That will be moved wherever you require it, no problem.
And then I guess the, the third question really relates to the drive aisle. So what is the intention in terms of a sidewalk or no sidewalk in that gravel area?
Can you put that up there, please?
Right here. I think you can see it on the far TV.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Juan Carlos Ochoa, 73626, Highway 111, Palm Desert. I am the architect for this addition. And a little bit of background on the parking, the handicap space. What happened before, we actually had less number of parking spaces, and that's why I stayed there, but for sure, we can relocate it. That's absolutely not a problem. We were asked to reduce the square footage of the addition, and maybe just by nature of not paying attention where the parking, the handicap parking space was, we relocated, but it'd be fairly easy enough. Regarding the driveway, if you notice on our exhibit, we feel measured everything, so the dimensions that you see on the site plan are actual field dimensions. The minimum requirement, in the ordinance, 14 feet is required for one-way traffic, and we are meeting that requirement, even adding the sidewalk, which is four feet, would be minimum for handicap circulation. What happens is, if you see the bollards, the actual, that curve with the gravel is going to have to be pushed towards the building. So with that, we're going to be gaining that extra space that we don't have, that we don't have.
So just to clarify, you're going to remove the gravel, or you're going to push it in toward the building so that it's like a foot wide?
That is correct. Wherever that bowl, the yellow bollards are, that's where the curve is going to meet, which we gain another two or three feet. Yeah, and it's hard to notice that on the exhibit, but because, but it's showing exactly what the location would be. So in my opinion, I think we're meeting even, I mean, it would be nice if we can reduce the driveway to 12 feet, but at least how it is right now, we are meeting the ordinance.
Commissioner Rotman, I think that was, I'm not sure whose question that was.
I do have, I actually do. So two things. One, are you, what are you doing with the door on the front of the building?
It's a question for, and I'm going to go back, the window is going to be, as you can see, there's an open, there was, like I said, filled in, but that will come back to become a window as, almost as a retail store. And I, we do have an access for handicap, which will be the main access, the door is existing, so I, I was, we were asked to keep the door, although I don't know if it's going to be able to be used for, for anything.
My intention was to have it for, if there was ever an issue inside, that it would be able to be opened from inside for an exit place, but not entered through. So it will be...
Well, I'll leave it to Architectural Review, but I think you need to look at that door, so...
Oh. The front, excuse me, sir. The front of the building is going to be beautiful.
Okay.
My office is right next door, and I love the city, I love the place. It will be presented very well.
And then the last question I have is that it looks like on the south side of the building, there's quite a substantial area in the setback. If I'm reading the site, how is that space to be used, or is it just going to sit there?
Can you show me what you're talking about? I don't know.
On the south side of the, well, you look at the site plan in particular, you'll see on the south side of the building, there's quite a bit of space between the building and the property line, and I'm just wondering what that space is going to be utilized as.
Yeah, we were following the setback requirement, and so currently, this space is just gravel, but we're adding a mechanical room for the new addition, and so I guess we could be, can be landscaped. Now, we are planning on hiring a landscape architect. What we did is just preliminary as far as the landscape, but for sure, it'll be done by professionals on this field.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can you pull up the...
And we had questions on the driveway, what, not just the driveway, but the parking area.
Yes, please.
Are you planning on resurfacing that?
Can we pull the parking lot up, please? The way it looked in the back, yes, right there, yes. The reason on the, where we're proposing the addition, the reason it looks very rough on the, behind the building was the daycare center had a playground there for many years, right? Yes, all along the back there, all that over there. That was a playground, and there was a sandbox in there for about 17 years, and when they moved, they took it out, the parking lot. And where that rough spot is, is where the proposed add-on. And then the portion that will not be covered by the add-on will be resurfaced, and it's going to be pretty. I wouldn't have it any other way. And the windows in the front will definitely be...
Commissioner Baker?
One short question here on the, the trees. If you're looking, looking at this picture, you have, how are you going to plant trees? Are you going to have to pull the parking bollards up? Because right now, the cars are all the way against the wall. There's no way you could squeeze a tree in anywhere.
We were thinking of the trees on the angle parking.
Yeah, we're using diamonds, which is very standard type of planter to accommodate a large tree.
Oh, is that, oh, okay. I see it now, okay.
I couldn't tell, yeah. Thank you. Any other questions?
I think that's it.
Okay.
The matter is before the commission. It looks to me like we've got a approval with conditions, so seeing if we can take our comments and turn them into conditions. Would someone like to take a stab at it, or do you want me to do that? Well, I will do it. I will take a stab. I'm going to move approval that the storage, there's some storage in the back parking lot that will be removed, that the drive aisle in shall, the applicant has agreed to move back the gravel to widen the drive aisle so that we can get a 14-foot entrance and a, a good-sized walkway sidewalk. So the site plan should be revised. A site plan would be approved only with that, probably with the gravel no wider than one foot. And we, we would need a revised site plan. In terms of the front of the building, we would very much like the Architectural Advisory Committee to look at the front of the building to make it attractive. We, we have some concerns with the way it looks now. We understand there will be two windows, but we haven't been shown a rendering of what it would look like. I believe when you go to the Architectural Advisory, you should be providing that. And to the extent that the two buildings can look at all similar, that might be good, but not necessary. The, the remainder of the driveway should be, should be cleaned up, and I'm not sure if blacktop, it's a blacktop, I think, so the driveway, the whole of the driveway should be blacktop. The trees that are put in should be 36-inch box from our recommendation so that they come in with shade. And there should be a good and readable landscape plan that shows, that shows what is being done with the large area that's currently empty between the building that's being added onto and the neighbor, the neighbor walls, so that there should be some treatment of that space that is not just gravel, but landscape. And I don't know if I've caught everything.
The ADA...
Oh, the ADA, yes. That the ADA parking should be in some way adjacent to, closer to the building and the use. In this instance, I'm assuming we want it closer to the, to the building that is being added onto, since that's in our purview, and in such a way that people don't need to walk behind cars that are going to be backing out to utilize the ADA parking. Anything else?
It may be my neglect. Did you speak to the HOAs of the condos behind you and adjacent to you, to the, to the south?
So notice gets sent to all neighboring neighborhood organizations, so they were notified.
My question is, do the, is there a mechanism? I'm thinking of noise problems at 10 o'clock at night on a Tuesday. If I live in those condos, is there a number where they can call someone, other than code enforcement, of course? But it'd be nice if there was a number that they could let you know that, you know, we're getting a lot of issues with noise, because you're surrounded by condos, and on weeknights, that area is definitely quiet.
I think staff hasn't worked on that at all and considered it, and we don't know what the evening use of this, this property or the hours are going to be.
Well, remember...
Will there be outside music or amplified music?
No.
So there will be no amplified, people talking, no amplified music? I don't know what we can do about the nighttime noise of people returning to their cars. Staff want to give us any advice on that?
Right. So there, there is, remember, it's a by right use, so it would be able to be there. If there was a noise complaint, the city could respond to it. There could be a mechanism to reach out to the condominiums that are behind it on the side. We would be able to have some contact with them, but until there's a complaint, it's a little bit difficult to, to condition.
The only way we can handle that is to have it come back to us in a year after it's operational, if you want to do that.
I'm, I'm on my, yes.
Okay, so we're not adding a condition in that regard. Is there a second to that motion?
I would second that.
And any comments? Can you call the roll, please?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much, and the place will look beautiful.
Thank you. The next item before us is a request by the Planning Commission for a six-month review of a land use permit at 19-102 Amendment for the Village, former Village Pub located at 266 South Palm Canyon Drive. Staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, everyone. The item in front of you tonight is a six-month review of a land use permit, number 19-102 Amendment for the Village. It's a business located at 266 South Palm Canyon Drive. The project site is a commercial property in downtown, which is located immediately west of the existing public parking structure at the northwest corner of West Baristo and Indian Canyon Drive. The Village is a full-service restaurant and a bar, and because of its location in the central business district, all restaurant uses are subject to a land use permit requirement. And in addition to the serving of food items and alcoholic beverages, the business conducts indoor and outdoor entertainment, as well as the use of sound amplification equipment. And the business currently operates between 6:00 AM to 2:00 AM daily, seven days a week. In, in 2020, the applicant requested an amendment to the previous land use permit, which is 19-102, to start his business operation at 6:00 AM instead of 10:00 AM. And at the meeting, the Planning Commission required the applicant to return to the Planning Commission for a six-month review after the end of the COVID-19 pandemic. And at the time of the review in 2020, local restaurants and bar were under local emergency ordinance, which... emergency ordinance, which limited the daily operation up till two, excuse me, twelve a.m., midnight. And the end of the, the global pandemic was declared on May eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. As you saw in the staff report, the staff conducted a site visit and analyzed the business conformance to the conditions that are included in the land use permit. And the staff finds that the business generally meets the site and operational requirements. And no complaints have been reported or filed against the business since 2019. The business currently implements a security plan, which was originally created in two, twenty-thirteen, and there have been minor changes to the floor plans. So staff finds that revised and updated the security and the floor plans are necessary. And at the inspection, the staff also noticed that an art mural had been installed on the south elevation of the building. And this is the image of the art mural that's been installed. And based on these findings, staff is recommending the following changes to be made to land use permit nineteen-dash-one-oh-two amendment. The first one is to reinstate the condition, number twenty-seven, to require the original security plan to be updated to include the most current business information. And the condition number, excuse me, the second one is a condition number twenty-eight to be removed. And this is a requirement of the six-month review. And staff is also recommending the addition of condition number twenty-nine and the condition thirty, which required the applicant to submit a revised floor plan to the Department of Planning Services. And then also the applicant to obtain our mural permit approval for the after-the-fact art mural on the south side of the elevation. If the applicant choose to remove the art mural, that may be considered meeting this requirement. And in conclusion, staff requests that the Planning Commission take the following actions. The first one is provide directions to staff regarding minor issues identified in the staff report and add the recommended conditions to the existing conditions of approval and provide further directions to staff for any additional actions that might be necessary. And this concludes the staff presentation, and applicant is available in the audience. Thank you.
Before we go further, since I may be, along with Noriko, the history here, I don't think anybody else was on the commission when this came before us. It, the six-month requirement had to do with serious noise complaints and consistent noise complaints from neighbors. And I was gratified to see the changes, although, and I talked with Chris about the fact that the inspection was done at two in the afternoon instead of two a.m. when we would have wanted the inspection to be done. But it, so I think, I think that's the background, that's why we wanted them to come back. Are there questions?
In looking at the minutes from 2020, it seems like the, from one of the commissioners, some of the complaints were between six a.m. and ten a.m. Does that seem right? Or was that just a, a type of, or were there loud music concerns early in the morning when they first opened? Which doesn't seem like a normal time where there'd be complaints. Did you see that in the September minutes from 2020?
Yes, I do. The business was.
They must have.
I don't believe the business was operating. Wasn't the change at that, the change at that time was to open it at six a.m.?
Correct.
Yeah, it wasn't, it was opening at ten a.m., I believe.
Correct.
So I have to believe that that was likely an error in the minutes because the purpose of that amendment at that time was to allow them to open at six a.m.
And, and the reason for all the conditions being imposed were the noise complaints from the neighbors?
And my understanding, Commissioner Miller, was at the time, there were a lot of complaints about late-night noise and, and we didn't, it's in the report, we didn't necessarily cover it extensively verbally, but we did check in with both the policeman, police department and code enforcement, and there are no records of any complaints in the last.
And it was, it was not only this business, there were, was a noisy block of businesses adjacent to each other. So, Commissioner Murphy?
I have a question for staff around the condition five. And there's references to seating and table arrangements were not consistent with the plan, the floor plan. So I guess my question is, I'm assuming the city is not monitoring the actual arrangement of seating and tables. It's more focused on capacity so that a, a business can move tables and chairs around whenever they need to.
Yes, that is.
It was implied when I, at least the way I read through it, that, that the applicant would have to come back to the city if they were going to make changes to the arrangements of the tables? Is that, did I misread it?
So for the land use permit, what the Department of Planning Services concerned is amount of seating because that typically determines the amount of required parking spaces. So when the business decides to make minor changes in terms of a table and a seating arrangement, that's usually not a concern. However, in this case, even though based on the staff's visual survey of the floor plan, when the staff visited the site, it met the, the parking, not parking, excuse me, the seating requirement, there were some changes and the planning department should have the most updated floor plan. That requirement was not explicitly stated in the previous, the land use permit, but staff is recommending that the planning department now has the updated floor plan, which depicts the most current information.
Right, I think the concern was just more having an accurate site plan that we could reference. Of course, they're going to move things around as business needs shift, any given day, potentially an event or, you know, whatever. But I think just since we're in this process, making sure we have the most current site plan that we can for the purposes Noriko's talking about.
Okay, that was my concern is that we weren't trying to impose a burden on a business for having to move things around as needed. The other, go ahead.
Go ahead, no.
The other question I had was just the, the mural issue. It seems to me that that's less of a mural and more of just a signage to direct people to the business that are coming along the alley. So I don't even know if it would qualify as a mural.
The zoning code does define a signage, and this is not a signage, this is an art mural.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. I think it's based on the definition. We have, in my opinion, very rigid sign rules, and so this falls certainly outside of those rules. And so by definition, we would call it a mural. So we're suggesting not that it be removed, but that they get the approval after the fact, which is something that we process regularly.
Okay.
The city likes murals. I mean, we do like murals to go through our arts commission. We, we used to have authority over them and we gave them away, gave it away, just to let you know that it doesn't come to us. But I think going through the city process, Lulu's, for example, has an exquisite mural on the side of its building, which really adds to that whole district. And I think going through that process would be good. And we're certainly not advocating taking a mural down, just that it gets, it gets approval. However, because of the history of noise with this property, I would love to see us have it come back one more time in a year. And I would like to also ask, have our director ask zoning, or the code enforcement, if they would do us the courtesy of doing the inspection on the noise at an hour when we would expect noise. And have it come back.
I appreciate you not making that request of planning staff because we don't have the overtime budget.
I understand planning staff doesn't work past six and that a two o'clock exam may suck.
Planning staff may be at the facility at that time. They could just, you know.
I'm not sure who you're looking at, Commissioner Miller.
But those, I would like to move approval on this with the conditions, but to add that condition that come back in a year out of courtesy to the, the neighbors who raised concerns with us originally.
I will second that, but with a caveat, I'd like to see if you're okay with this sort of friendly amendment regarding your condition about coming back. I don't want to belabor the commission or the staff for this to come back unless there's been a number of documented complaints. So would you be willing to tie it into some complaints?
That's fine with me, if there are no complaints, it doesn't need to come back. But if there are, if there is a documented complaint, yes.
Can I just confirm? So would the condition be just so that we, in the event we don't come back, then we would have this sort of weird condition on the books? Can it be, the condition should be worded something to the effect that it returns one time? We could even put the specific date in, at any time before December 2024, should there be any noise complaints or complaints issued against the property? That way it kind of falls off the books.
Any verified noise complaints that have been followed up on, yeah.
And that way it falls off the books kind of automatically.
Is there a second?
That, that was my second, yeah.
Okay, can you call the roll, please? And would you call the roll with the person who made the motion, the secondor and then the rest of the commission?
Chair Wermick?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Robert Rotman?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you for that amendment. And then moving right along. And just informally, I've asked staff for green paper again for the agenda so I can find it in my packet so I can keep moving things forward. This is a time for Planning Commission reports, requests and comments. Are there comments, reports or requests from the commission?
I just have a, I have a question that staff may follow up on. Do we have yet a date as to when the Starbucks drive-through is going to council?
Ah, that was going to be under my remarks, Commissioner Miller.
Mine, mine really have to do with the party. Are people planning on attending?
Yes.
Oh, good, yay. And just so you know, we invite Architectural Advisory and also HSPB and staff. And this has always been a Planning Commission party to thank staff for the work they've done for us for the year and to, and to get to know our fellow commissioners on the other commissions. So delighted that you're coming. And now the planning directors report.
A couple of items first, as you'll see from the sheet, the seat shift, we did have Commissioner Roberts resign from the commission. You know, I think that his time is, is being highly focused on the Plaza Theater conversations. So, you know, we obviously regret his decision and we'll miss him and his contributions, but thank him very much for his service, but understand that he's doing a lot of other important work for the city and hopeful that one day he'll find his way back to us. That, of course, leaves another vacancy. So I believe the council has to officially accept his resignation, which is on the agenda for tomorrow night's council meeting, at which point the clerk would, the clerk's office would begin the recruitment process for that position. So stay tuned on that. I imagine they'll keep that open through the holidays. Obviously with the holidays in there, they'll want to keep it open into January and then we'll sort of see what happens with that. On the flip side, we will regain Vice Chair Alain, who is wrapping up her service with the city, as I understand it, by the end of the year. So she has every intention of joining us again for our January tenth meeting. So we will regain her.
Just to comment on that, if you have, if people have suggestions of people you think we should recruit to put applications into the Planning Commission, please let Chris and I know and speak to them. We've had a couple of people who put applications in who are very qualified, but their applications won't count because they were in between the, the last placement and when the, the city will open it up again. So we're going back to, to them to ask them to put them in. But if you've got ideas of people that would be helpful to the commission, you know, please talk to them and talk to us about it.
And I'll talk about Starbucks now since it's come up. So that is going to the city council tomorrow night as a call-up. So I think I mentioned at our last meeting that a member of the council did call the item up, which is permissible under the municipal code. It's essentially a de novo hearing, so they set aside your decision and they reconsider it essentially anew. Obviously, they will receive the record of the conversation that happened here as well as at the Architectural Review Committee. I will say, and it's a member of public record, but the applicant has submitted a memo as well as a draft site plan for some proposed changes to respond to, you know, what they believe some of the concerns may have been around pedestrian access and things like that. And so what it looks like they are going to be proposing tomorrow night is a walk-up window as well as a patio that would be on the north side of the building to provide seating for the, for pedestrians who might be using that walk-up window. So that's what they're proposing. We'll see sort of how that hearing goes tomorrow night, but that is. So they've added one additional restroom in that draft plan that would be accessible to the patrons, and then there would be one on the interior for staff because they had some concerns around safety and sort of conflicts there.
Will that come back to us then with the revisions?
So it will ultimately be up to, to the city council.
Okay.
If, a strict interpretation of the municipal code would suggest that the city council needs to either affirm, modify or reverse the decision of the Planning Commission. So there's not a lot of room in there for them to do that, but I understand they've done that in the past. So I think it's going to really depend on the conversation, how tangible this plan is to them and what they want to do with it. But it's ultimately their call if they want to continue the meeting, have us come back with the staff recommendation once we've reviewed the full set of plans, whether they want to send it back to you or what they want to do with it.
It would have to go back to Architectural Review, though.
I believe it would have to go back to their.
I think, I think would happen because their review comes on our decision. I think Architectural Review had a hard time with it, am I correct? But did pass it?
They did pass it, but they added additional conditions beyond the ones that you all had added in that they, you know, they wanted to beef up the landscaping even more, they were looking for more articulation to the frontages that faced the street. They were looking for additions to the shading structure. So I think you all had conditioned, I may be reversing this, but I think you all had conditioned putting shading over where you actually placed the order in the queue. No, they did that. You had, you had conditioned the shade over the pickup window and they conditioned shade over the, the ordering kiosk itself. So those were the main concerns that they had, but they, they really did sort of struggle with a lot of the same items that you did.
So there, and I believe that sustainability, have they written in? Because they called me and told me that they were going to be, they were concerned about the drive-through.
Yeah, I believe that they are, have submitted a letter to the council, sort of reminding them of the sustainability goals of the city and I think raising some, some more global issues around drive-throughs more general. So we'll see how that conversation goes with the city council as well.
And we have one other item going to the city council, not a major item, we have the street vacation.
There is the street vacation that you all waited on at the last meeting is going, that's on the consent calendar.
And that goes because we are advisory only to tell them that, we said that the street vacation was consistent with the general plan, but the decision to vacate a street is the purview of the council, so that's also going to the council.
And I believe the PCN associated with hyphen, which you all had granted, is going as well. So that's the public convenience and necessity that is needed for ABC to grant the license. So that will be going to them as well.
That's consent calendar, isn't it?
That's a consent item as well. Yes. And then I have one other update, and I think it was on your desk, a memorandum regarding the outcome of the ARC Recruitment Subcommittee, which was the Chair Wermick, Commissioner Rotman and myself. And so we had four applicants to the vacancies on the Architectural Review Committee. We, or, we had more applicants than that, but we conducted four interviews, I should say. And of that, we have recommended that three be appointed to the three current vacancies. So that memo will sort of outline sort of how that shakes out. That gives us a relatively full commission for the moment, but we have five of our members whose terms expire at the end of June in 2024. So we'll sort of be back at this again very soon, but it does give us more time to get word out there, similar to the comments that were made on recruiting for this commission. If you know any. If you know any architects, or design professionals, or people who are interested and passionate about architecture, please recommend that they get their, their names into Commissioner Rotman, Chair Wermick, or myself. Specifically, I think where we're going to have a problem is we are required, per the municipal code, to have one landscape architect. We currently have two, but both of their terms are ending. So we need a landscape architect to apply. We didn't have one in this round. We're also losing one of our architects. We need to have three architects, or two architects and one architectural designer. We're appointing two, but we're going to be down another one as of June, so we need another architect or architectural designer to apply as well. So...
In terms of the people we recommended, Lance O'Donnell is very well-known in the city as both a, an architect who's brought many projects before us, and he was also been on Architectural Review. He teaches at the, and teaches at the college, so he's returning. Gary Fredericks was on, when I, so many years ago, when I first started on Planning Commission, and he, he is also returning. Both of them were highly respected when they were on. Jackie Thomas is a person who's involved in buying modern, modern houses and upgrading them and reselling them. We're very excited to have her join a city commission, and especially this one. And so we were very, very pleased with the, the people we got. We just had hoped we would be able to fill, you know, begin to think about filling the vacancies that are going to come due in June. And we will be losing, the people who are leaving are Tom Jakeway, who's the current Chair of the Commission. He's been an incredibly valuable member of the Commission, an architect probably for almost 50 years. Yeah, worked with the original Modernists, and has a, you know, substantial practice of his own. I'm trying to think of...
Commissioner Rotman?
Commissioner Rotman, who we, we, when we, we realized he was leaving, we recruited to be on Planning Commission, and...
Sean Lockyer, who had actually resigned.
Sean Lockyer, who resigned earlier, who is one of the most exciting architects in the valley in terms of the work that he does, and was a great contributor, but his practice took him away, I think, from the Commission more than he wanted. So we want to thank everybody who's, who is leaving. They've done a great job, and we're really excited about the new people coming on. And we want you to affirm, we need to know that you're okay with what we've done. So this isn't just our decision, this is yours if you're in agreement with it.
Let's take a roll call vote. We can.
Chair Wermick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And thank you to our Subcommittee members for participating in that process.
Chris, has there been any further conversation with Jonathan? Is he...
Yeah, I think he's dealing with a, a family matter and potentially an illness. So unfortunately, we've not been able to coordinate, but I think, given where we are with the vacancies, we'll, we'll give him some time to deal with what he needs to, and he did say, hopefully, we can pull him in in, in a little while and consider him perhaps for a future vacancy.
And then have you talked to either Member McCoy or Dozy about potentially extending one year?
So they would both be open to it.
Okay, great.
And so of the people who are actually, whose terms are up in June, we have a couple that we can potentially reappoint for one year. So both Member Dozy and Member McCoy, who are actually our landscape architects, so we may actually have a solution in there if they're willing to stay for one year. And then we have an alternate member, Dan Thompson. So the ARC is comprised of seven members and up to two alternates. Dan Thompson has been a very wonderfully-serving alternate member, essentially functioning as a full member, and his first term with the ARC is up at the end of June, so he would be eligible for reappointment for a full three-year term. And so, you know, we have an option there to think about how we want to...
And we do need to, can you ask the people who are eligible if they would put their names in for reappointment?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. Great, thank you.
And before I adjourn to January 10th, I may or may not be with you, depending on the ruling the City Council makes on remote attendance, because I will be, I will not be in Palm Springs that day, but I would be available to join remotely if the council allows it, but I think the new rules are coming into effect.
Right. I think we'll, we'll have to perhaps send out an email update and then talk about it, you know, more at our January 10th meeting, but I think we've all been under, operating under the assumption that the, you know, pre-COVID Brown Act rules with slight modifications will come back into effect January 1, which gives very limited opportunity for remote participation by board members, board and commission members. The council is, is discussing remote meetings tomorrow night. I, I'm not fully in the loop on exactly what that conversation is. I think our hands are tied by state law, but we'll keep you apprised if we learn any new information.
I know that they've enjoyed the flexibility they've had.
Yes.
At least you see that on the television, or, you know, on YouTube every time I watch them. So hopefully, if they can keep that, a little bit of that in for us, that would be great.
Chris, are you going to send out a schedule for 2024?
Oh, yes, absolutely. We have it finalized. We'll circulate it around.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks.
And with that, I'm adjourning until 5:30 Wednesday, January 10th, in the year 2024.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas and happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, happy New Year to everybody.
All of that. Happy holidays.